Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the webinar on intelligent automation in local government. This is being put forward today by UiPath in conjunction with T-Impact. So, welcome, everybody. My name is Ian McGregor, and I'm going to act as the host for the today's session. We've got a full agenda for the next 45 minutes or so. I run the public sector business for UiPath in the UK and Ireland, and I'm honoured to sort of help you through and introduce you to RPA today. So, what is the agenda? Well, because it's a slightly strange situation, normally if this was face-to-face, we'd sort of ask people what your experiences are with RPA to date, but we can't do that. So, what we're going to do is we're going to, I'm going to set the scene of what is RPA at the lowest common denominator, so everybody understands what robotic process automation is. And then we're going to build up, what does it mean in local government? What the benefits that you can accrue are? And I'm going to talk about that for a little while. And then, more importantly, and if you like, the meat of the day is we're going to actually talk with an actual customer, a user, RPA, and talk about that. And they're going to talk about their RPA journey, what they've done, what has been great, what could, you know, could have gone better. And Lee's going to talk to us about how Durham County Council have been using RPA, robotic process automation up until now. And then Keith from T-Impact is actually going to talk further about what are the potential things? You've got to think about what are the benefits that you can accrue from implementation of automation throughout the council? And he's going to talk through, you know, what you could expect, what is the goodness that comes out of an RPA journey? And then we're going to come back to a Q&amp;A session at the end. So, before we start, just a couple of housekeeping comments. Firstly, because of the nature of this, of the webinar, we won't be taking questions throughout because we find it quite disruptive. So, I would ask, if you have any questions, on the screen you will see a Q&amp;A box. Can you post your questions in the Q&amp;A box? And when we come to that point, we will go through as many as time allows. That's the first comment. The second statement is, this presentation is being recorded, and it will be made available to all fairly soon after the presentation of the session finishes. So, thank you very much for that. Or the third thing I should say is, this is the first of three presentations on RPA in local government, each with a different customer, talking about their experiences, their journey, just to give you some names. The next one is De Corum Borough Council, we'll be talking about their experiences, and more particularly about how RPA is giving them a single view of the customer. And then we're also going to have Oxford City Council talking about how RPA supports their existing legacy systems. So, these other webinars will be taking place over the next few weeks as well. So, welcome, everybody, again, and now let's kick off. What is automation? Well, automation has been around for many hundreds of years. Agriculture, they automated agricultural work, then construction, then manufacturing. So, RPA, robotic process automation, is the automation of repetitive rules-based tasks that take places in business. Now, these processes themselves can be simple, can be quite quick, can be very cheap to do. And the examples would be cutting and pasting text or data from one spreadsheet and sticking it into another spreadsheet, or extracting information reports from an ERP or a financial system, or extracting the data from emails. This is the stuff that people do day in, day out. As I say, in its own right, they don't take, might not take very long, and they don't cost very much to do. But when one individual does tens or hundreds a day, and there are tens or hundreds of people doing it, the time factor certainly adds up very quickly. And the whole point of robotic process automation is to remove those day-to-day laborious, non-productive work that individuals do, so that they have more time to concentrate on the value-add, the constructive, the creative, the more fun side of work, and leave the repetitive rules-based processes to a robot, to robotic process automation, to do in day in, day out. And I say, this has been going on now, automation for many hundreds of years, in RPA terms. It's been going on now for about five, six years, as the guys, we certainly see it. And the benefits, the goodness that comes out of an RPA, adopting RPA, has been well-proven, well-documented, and is certainly not early adopter technology anymore. This is very much mainstream now. So, and I don't know what each of you, where each of you are on your RPA journey, but hopefully today you will, if nothing else, you will hear from another customer and I give you more, and I know that's more contacts to go and help or share your RPA journey with, to make it more pervasive, to make it more successful. The processes that are automatable by organisations really fall into two areas. There's the processes that every organisation does. It doesn't matter whether you're a local authority, whether you're a central government department, whether you're an insurance company, whether you're a bank, whether you're a manufacturing company. If you employ people, if you pay people, if you buy stuff, if you store stuff, then you have processes which are very similar across the board. And these are bucket term, back office processes. So, that's accounts payable, HR onboarding, stock control, all those sorts of processes. Doesn't matter what you are, these processes, you need these processes to survive as an organisation. And these are the processes that are, if you like, the ones that readily, and the low-hanging fruit with the first areas to automate, because these processes themselves, they are very structured, they are very well documented, they are process-defined, they're regulated. So, these are the ones that organisations start to adopt initially and get the initial big wins and paybacks from. Then there are the processes, the tasks that organisations perform, that actually the reason for their existence. If you like, they're the services they provide. In insurance, an example would be a customer onboarding and claims handling, maybe issuing a letter for third-party car hire. These are processes specific to an insurance company. In local government, there are processes which are very specific to what services that a local authority provide, which are eminently automatable, and in many cases have been. And we'll come onto these in more detail soon. But an examples would be DBS checks, or CAT, or twos and fives, and those sorts of things. All these are processes which are eminently automatable.
Ian, Ian, sorry, really sorry, Ian, it's deep here. The slides aren't, the slides aren't moving on. We're still on the robotic one with the picture of the screwdriver and hammer.
Yeah, thank you, we should be, we should be. Okay, that's where we are, thank you, thanks, Steve. Okay, so there are two types of processes which are eminently automatable. There's the back office, whichever organisation does, and there's the front office as well. But why do companies, why do organisations automate? What is the benefit? Well, the benefit is very much based around certain things like the speed of which processes can take place, because robots can work 24 hours a day, the accuracy, robots never make a mistake. The data may be wrong, but the process or the task that the robot is automating is right. The compliance, the reportability, accountability, all these things are very key. But then being more subjective, if you take employees away from doing the drudgery day-to-day, it might only be 15, 20 minutes a day, or it might be a whole lot more. It frees them up to concentrate, as I say, more on the value add, the more creative, the more fun things. And these, and that employee satisfaction can increase significantly as well. Citizens, on the other hand, if citizens get a much quicker, more accurate response because the way they interact through online chatbots, and they get the answers, the information they want, A is correct, and B, it's almost entertaining, the citizen experience is vastly improved too. And the last thing, and let's not forget this, the cost per process can be significantly different as well. And that may not be the reason for entering or embarking on an RPA journey, but that can affect, you know, the overall output of a project. So, the cost of process as well can be significant. So, that is, if you like, the ground rules of what robotic process automation is generally across the board. If we bring that now down to local government, and this is a slide of examples where we have automated processes with various authorities already. Now, not all authorities have obviously done all processes, some have done bits and bobs. But if you see on this slide here, you know, you've got the back office stuff I've talked about, you've got finance, you've got new starters, payments, reporting, all those are back office standard processes. Then you've got the stuff that organisations, local authorities, provide as a service. You've got, as I say, you've got adult social care, contact once, DBS checks, revs and bends, registrations of births and deaths. All these processes and tasks that a local authority provide have been and can be automated. And we can talk about figures later on, not today because we don't have time, about organisations that have done this and what they've, the experiences they've got. So, that gives you an idea of where it has been done already in local government. But if you take it one step further out, what about public sector as a whole? So, you're talking not just local government, but you're talking central government departments, talking education, police, health, all these things. What other areas, processes have been automated and are automatable? Well, we've broken them down into buckets, you see on the screen, is the finance we've talked about. Legal is what is another area that lots of organisations, that all organisations need to do, undertake. Automation is good at managing that. IT, HR, and then on the screen right, you get to customer services. These are again, some of the examples are processes that are automated, that are specific to organisations. Egg marketing, for example, is literally DEFRA helped farmers market their eggs, their chicken eggs, and automation, it helps them on that. Also DEFRA Waste Management Application. So, these are specific processes that have been automated. Sick note processing, DWP, lots of them. And then the, I've got this down as the more interesting one, the miscellaneous ones in the middle. The National Cervical Screening Programme, part of it is automated using UiPath. Firearms certification, so if you apply to, for a certificate to store and handle a firearm, that is automated as well, but we'll talk about it a little bit in a bit. But one of the, the other ones, and this isn't down to the COVID-19, it's been there for a year or so now. You can now, should you so wish, get divorced online. So, you don't need to leave the house if you want to get divorced. And a lot of that process is now automated using UiPath. And bottom on there, COVID-19. RPA generally has, the activity around RPA has grown significantly during the lockdown. Organisations that have employees who are now working remotely, who are now have employees that may be a lot more off on sick leave, but they still need to maintain a business-as-usual operation, automation has stepped in to provide those services where normally it would have been humans doing so. So, COVID-19 has been a big enabler, an actor, if you like, for RPA as well. So, that's like where RPA is in public sector generally. Here's some names of some organisations that we have been working with already. And you'll see here, there are local authorities, there's Brent Durham, we're going to listen to here from Leeds Durham today, Surrey, et cetera. There are central government, I've mentioned already, DWP, education, home office. Then there's hospitals, NHS, there's police, and education, universities, all these organisations are already using RPA. There's two black boxes there. These are security services, so even if I knew what they did, I couldn't tell you. But as I don't, I can't tell you anyway. So, again, just an example of types of organisations that use automation, and in this particular case, use UiPath as well. Just coming down now to some specific benefits, where we've mentioned the name of the customer we have, we can. DWP, clear the pensions backlog, claims backlogs within two weeks. Before that, they were just throwing temporary staff at it, and really they were just holding water, they weren't making any inroads. And by doing automation, they A, they cleared it quickly, and B, the cost and the accuracy to detail was just phenomenal. A county council saved half a million pounds just through the automating part of the adult social care retention project alone. And that's just one project. So, this stuff really does work, really gives you significant benefits. You know, you go through some of those FTE savings, time savings, and going back to the police force, the time taken to process firearm certification applications, you know, has reduced difficulty, so they can increase the number they can process per day. But I think the real benefit to that is the error rate has gone from, it was gone down to zero. And when you're applying for firearm, I think that's extremely important. So, these are just some examples, a taster of the sort of benefits that RPA delivers. Say this stuff is now well-proven, it is well-established, various organisations are on various, there are various stages of their RPA journey. But that's all right for me to talk about, and I would say this thing is the best thing since sliced bread, obviously, because I work for UiPath. But I think the important thing here is to listen to a customer about their journey, what is good, what is great, what they've learned, what, you know, they can maybe improve. So, without you, I'm going to hand over to Lee, who's going to talk about the Durham County Council RPA journey. Thank you, Lee.
Thanks, Ian, morning, everybody. Lee Spragan from Durham County Council, I'm the application, currently the application development manager for that. If you cut the next slide in. Let's start, and then we'll move on to the next one. Right, so just a little bit about Durham County Council. Durham County Council is a unit that was created 10 years ago, and it was a county and seven district councils. So, yeah, although it's a very old council, it's actually relatively new in terms, we're about the sixth largest, sometimes you say the fifth, sixth largest, actually a unitary authority, so quite large. We have over half a million people, we serve 250,000 households. We've got a very large, a large area, probably with half the actual authority populated, the other half's very sparsely populated. And we'll have about 16,000 people worth of Durham County Council. That's a little bit overthink, because a lot of them are in school. So, we'll probably have directly, that we probably deal with directly, probably about 10,000 altogether. And not really a big city centre, we'll have Durham Council, Durham City, but that's more of a historic centre, not big city. So, but a number of small settlements throughout Durham. Next slide. Right, so where do we start with RPA? We started quite a while ago, we looked at it in 2017, and we're looking actually for RPA, we're looking at low code and the way we could automate something. When I was in a different role, I was looking at innovation. And part of that is we started, we read something about business process outsourcing and had mentioned RPA. So, we decided that RPA was something we should investigate. We sort of worked out, we generally have a shortage of ICT resource, don't have a shortage now. We think we'll probably have a shortage in the future. And we wanted to see whether we could do any citizen development or development out in the departments. So, we'll look at that. We also found, particularly in the low authority market, some of the package suppliers, the automation was either slow, didn't actually automate exactly the way we wanted it to, or fully enough. There was a little bit of holding the ransom on APIs and how we actually could use data. Particularly although we could probably do things from coding points of view, we're no longer amend things because the actual package was locked down. So, we actually saw this as possibly a way of us unlocking us from some of our suppliers. Next slide, Ian. So, what we did, we did an initial proof of concept in June 2017, and that was just to see what RPA looked like. That was actually with a, it wasn't with UiPath, it was with somebody else and a consultancy. And probably what it showed us was, it was a, we weren't really testing whether it worked, we were testing whether we'd use it for Durham. And we did find it, it did work out well, the actual pilot went well. But at that particular point in time, we couldn't really add up the figures of, with that particular consultancy and that particular, particular product, it didn't really fit in with the processes we'd identified up to then. So, what we decided to do is, we decided that we probably needed a partner to evaluate the RPA market and implement a solution. I'll probably say as an authority, we're probably really good at going out and buying sort of a finance system, adult system and a children's system, but we just felt this was something we needed some more advice on, on what was out there, and what would be most suitable for us. And so, we decided to do that as a consultancy. The one thing I have to mention was, we had the full support of our head of finance, and also our resources management team, and they backed us from a funding and also a time point of view. And then that's one of the successes of the project. Next slide, Ian. Right, so what we did was, we did a two-stage procurement, we didn't do it as a standard procurement, we would only do it in low authority. We actually did it as a consultancy procurement. So, the first stage was to choose a supplier to evaluate the market. And the next stage was to purchase and implement a solution based on four identified processes. The first stage, we'll put it as two separate ones. The first stage, we could do the first stage without doing the second stage. From that, we had eight companies that actually expressed an interest, four we've chosen to present. And the preferred supplier on April 2018 was T-Impact, after assessing those four. What actually happened then between April and June 2018? Sorry. It just got on, Warren, Ian, I think. You couldn't move back in, could you? Right. And so, the first, the first stage was, we reviewed the market, April to June. And the report was presented on June 2018 by T-Impact. So, we agreed which products we would review, and what they'll come back. And what we decided is, we felt that UiPath with ourselves and T-Impact were probably the best option. This was based on price, functionality, ongoing development. And we always felt it was a global product, it was one of the market leaders. And the trading academy also seemed very attractive from our point of view, about the way we wanted to actually develop RPA further. From that, we then, we then had enough confidence to actually go ahead to stage two. So, what we did was, we purchased an annual subscription for UiPath. We bought one robot, we bought the orchestrator licence, so we were able to schedule the jobs, and also bought a studio licence for doing the development. What we also agreed is, we agreed the four processes we're going to automate using the three-stage set for excellence from T-Impact. And next stage. Excellent, yeah, right. So, so the three stages we went through is, T-Impact initially led the project. So, we reviewed the actual four stages, they gave us a working model of how we would review for RPA, and that actually started the first processes. But then supporters through that, they made sure somebody was on site, actually gave us intensive training on that, and working with the people who had, transferring the skills. And the last one was, they gave us the assurance where by the end, in the last processes, we were developing them ourselves. So, that was completed between October 2018 and January 2019. And what we found at the end of it, actually by the time we reached the last processes, we were actually were self-sufficient, and they had transferred the expertise. So, we'd actually achieved one of the aims of our, would achieve the main aims that we actually had, development people within Durham that could actually develop processes without actually needing further consultancy. But we always had the fact that we could go back to impact, with T-Impact if we needed to. Next slide. Right, so just to give you an idea of the four processes we did, and the reason we chose them as well, we worked with T-Impact on that. The first one we did was a notification of service. That was developed in our SIDS system, which would probably mean little to most people in the thing, but that's our bespoke system for adults and childrens, which actually is currently being replaced. But it's an Oracle-based system, it's on-premise. And we chose that because, one, because it was bespoke, two, because Oracle, traditionally Oracle hasn't been sometimes the easiest product to use third-party products with. So, we felt that was a good, a good test. And it also helped us with the SIDS system, that this was a system that's going out. So, we did that to try and free up some valuable resource within our area to automate something. So, the real thing wasn't cost-saving, the real thing was to actually try and free up resource in the particular area. The next one we did was the rent increases, you see, that's a yearly job. That's within the Civigo system, which is the revenues and benefits system. And that's applying the rent increases for benefits at the year-end. That, that actually, again, was a, it was a package provided by Civigo, it was an on-premise system. It used a, it uses an audit database now, progress database. So, that was chosen to think, well, if it works with that, it'll probably work with most things that we've actually got out there. The third one was, we chose CRM. This was a firm-step CRM system, and what it does is, it creates some duplicate account records. And to be fair, there were one of these where they were just growing, and there was never any way we were going to have the resource to actually go through them. So, the RPA routine was to do that. And the firm-step system is a cloud-based system, it's in the Amazon cloud, it's again a package. So, that was a different type of package that we felt would give another idea of how we actually would use RPA. Again, that goes daily, we had a backlog, so there was backlog, we ran through all of them, but it runs on a daily basis now. And the final one was the HR post-creation, that's with our Resource Link system. So, we have a bespoke SharePoint front-end, which should be replaced, which actually creates a post, which needs, which captures the information, then the post is created in the Zeller system in Resource Link. Again, that was an Oracle system, on-premise and a package. So, we felt that was something that actually would give a good test. And these systems are all based in one area, they're all based in our financial support services area. And next slide. Right, so where are we now? So, from the time from the initial consultancy, we've actually done 17 live processes with an additional robot. We've bought an additional robot, now I probably should have said an additional studio licence now. The main things we've done, they're all around the financial support area, but we've done the Atlas Benefits Processing, which is the data received from the DWP. We do change of name, income new missing components, income new universal credits and payments, income change of certs, carriers, and change of address. These were all things that didn't particularly, the automation didn't work within Civigo. So, we've actually managed to make the package much better and save significant amounts of resource by doing these. We'll also have universal credit process, universal change of circumstances, and universal housing benefit stop notifications. So, all these run daily, and they're all based around facts that it was information, it was automation, we couldn't get easily from the package supplier, or that we're in process, or that they've been on, they just, we didn't think we would actually ever get to them. We also have a diary, a diary process for benefits and enforcement. And we've also done a little bit more work with our bespoke package on notification service for letter mergers, and we use hybrid mail, so that actually gives letters to care homes. Again, that's, that's linking to our hybrid mail system and actually automating that. And the main thing I'm doing, Sid, is very much to try and make sure we've got some resource to be able to convert this particular patch. Next slide. Right, so what lessons have we learnt? We felt the partner collaboration model worked well. We actually did, that we did achieve our aims, have actually been self-sufficient by the end of it. We did get a good analysis of the actual market and the product, so that we felt worked well. Unlike sometimes we've had in certain times, we were transferred the knowledge, T-Impact did work with us to actually make sure we were self-sufficient by the end of it. The next one is, sometimes you have to take a leap of faith. What we found initially, I have to be honest, the process we identified didn't probably give us the payback we thought. So, unlike what Ian described a lot with the payback, we probably struggled initially till we got into it to find the payback. And I have to say, with the support of our head of finance, he was very keen to go ahead. We have since found that that paybacks came once we probably understand a lot more, and once our people understand a lot more about RPA. We felt from a low authority, choosing a global product with continuous development with UiPath has been a big advantage. UiPath keeps developing and carries on developing. So, we're not, we feel that's a product we can probably develop with and actually continue with, which sometimes is a frustration in the low authority market. I think the biggest problem I had was with it is, don't underestimate the amount of test data you'd need, and the fact you need up-to-date test systems to test it. As everybody knows, with RPA, does things really, really well, but it does them the same way all the time, really, really well. So, we sometimes underestimated how, what we needed from a test system. And some of the processes varied about how easy the word to test, so that the SIDS one was a particular problem. And it really, it was really quite, we'll probably struggle sometimes to get the test data and to make sure we have the process right. We do think, and we do think RPA is part of the solution for automation, doesn't do everything. It probably can do everything, but you probably carefully, you don't use it for everything, because there's probably things you can actually do a better way. And from our point of view, we've still got lots to do, we probably only tackled the one sector in this particular time. What we've done differently, we didn't have a lot of, although I've always worked in IT, we didn't have a lot of buy-in from our central IT department, and we didn't have a dedicated central resource, and that's what we should have, so we have an excellent centre of excellence in financial support services. But we're actually now trying to, trying to actually some, get some further resource out in the central IT department. So we can roll it out to other areas. And that's, next slide, Ian. And that's, this is our next steps. So our next steps, we're working now on using Zellus Resource Link doing a My View absence management. So this is sort of automatically fills in the interview, if there's any sickness forms, rather than the manager having to sit, fill them in themselves. It'll actually do that automatically. And we've identified additional resource from the IT center and also an ICT lead from the applications area at more a development level. So we can actually start looking at rolling out other areas and creating other, other centers of excellence and other particular, other particular directors through the council, but coordinated from an ICT point of view. And also we'll probably feel some IT resource will probably add to the product as well. Right. Next slide. I think that's it, actually. There we are. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lee. Very informative, very useful. Thanks for that. And obviously you'll be joining us on the panel later to ask some questions. So again, thank you for that. Now from a different angle, T Impact, very much a UI path partner. We work together a number of projects and Keith from T Impact is going to talk more about some of the other types of benefits that can be accrued through an automation project and program. So Keith.
Let's turn the next slide, please, Ian. Next slide, please. Right. So Lee identified a couple of his challenges that he was facing and why he looked to work with RPA. We, we work with, with a number of local councils and so we listen to the types of challenges we, we hear from them. And we've just included a few of the points here, just to see if any of this resonates with you. There, there's a lot of uncertainty going on. People not sure what's going to happen. Central government are, are, are sending out mandates and expecting local councils without much consultation to respond very quickly, makes things very difficult. So the ability to, to, to be flexible, to move quickly is really important. Obviously, the, the COVID-19 is incurred a lot more costs than, than had been planned. So, so there's less money to go around and you need to make savings. But on the other hand, there's an expectation that you have to do the same or more for, for less. So there, these pressures are building. It makes it quite difficult. There's some pressure to move to a 24 by seven service delivery model in some parts of your, the organizations. And a big focus also to move from a service-oriented approach to a customer-centric, you know, understanding better what the, what the citizens who are part of your councils actually want from the council and how they want to interact and, and work with them in that way. And, and it's also a very difficult time to make decisions. There's still, because there's so many uncertainties because of the, what's happened with, with finances, there might be some very difficult decisions that have to be made. And you want to have every tool in your toolbox. And then all of these that we believe are, are good reasons to at least investigate RPA and see if this is a, is, is a valid tool. You should be, you should be having as part of your armoury. Next slide, please, Ian. So I wanted to speak to you just for a couple of minutes here about the benefits of RPA that are quite often overlooked. I know they're mentioned, but we, we, we is guilty of anybody else of trying to quantify in numeric terms and financially what the return on investment is going to be or the net benefits. And that's really important to get the justification, but it's not the only thing to consider. So I really want to talk to you for just a minute about service transition. So how fast can you get robots up and running? And then service quality. So once you've got robotics up and, up and running, how that can improve your customer experience and the quality of the service you deliver. So first with service transition. We, 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 I think it's been stated in, in, you know, in, in various industry news and webinars and anything that you'll listen to, that you can build robots faster than you can hire staff. Well, we sat down with a client and we actually analyzed it. So we spent some time and we looked at the process it would actually take. And I wanted to share with you kind of a like, like for like. So if you think about when you start off and you look at recruitment versus deploying, let's say two RPA workflows. During the first eight, nine weeks, you're taking time away from your most experienced resources to write job specs, document the, what the work that's actually been, needs to be done down to work construction level. So a new hire coming in can do it, perform job interviews, go through the whole selection process and then do the initial onboarding whenever staff come on board. By comparison, what you'd be doing with robots is, is similar, but it shouldn't take as much effort. You're documenting what happens. You're passing on to a, a team of RPA specialists what the process is. And that needs to be the, the happy path, what happens when everything works and all the exceptions. And the thing about robotics is they won't make it up as they go along. But you know, robots aren't as clever as humans. So they don't work around problems. They'll only do exactly what they're told. So you need to invest, you know, a reasonable amount of front time upfront to make sure all of that is clear. You've identified the conditions, you've identified where they might need to hand off to your staff. Because robots seldom do 100% of transaction we put in. They, they take the heavy, the heavy lifting off. So if you compare that, that's three to four weeks. We've allowed four weeks, which is probably the longest I think we've ever, ever had in producing a, a process design document. Next slide, page down, please, Ian. And then if you compare the next step, so now you've got your staff on board, you need to monitor them, you need to mentor them, you need to finish the onboarding. If things aren't going well, you need to retrain them, you need to get rid of them and replace them. So it's, it's quite intensive period of time for your experienced staff, generally your supervisors to, to bring these, to bring the, this team in and get it up to speed. If you complete that by 20 weeks, that would be really good. You know, most organizations take quite a bit longer than that before they've got a, a, a team of even three fully bidded in and really performing to full functionality. It's usually more than six months, to be honest. Where with a, with a robot at this, by comparison, what's happening is your team is participating in, in, in playbacks and clarifications or seeing the robot get built. They're doing some acceptance tests. And so it still takes time from them. But that's generally, you know, six, seven weeks, you know, maybe it's a complex process eight. So these things are built really quickly. Next slide, please. So the, the, the green here is really showing, you know, what are you, at what point are you up and running and delivering a full service? So around week 21, 22, we say again, optimistically, if you, if you're recruiting staff to do, do work manually. Around week 10, 11, 12, depending on exactly the scope of the work, if you're deploying two robots. So you, then you're, then you're dropping back to where you're just doing your ongoing monitoring, mentoring and onboarding. And with a robot, same as if you had a human team, you want to be checking on it. So the robot will be, will be capturing and auditing all the work that it does throughout. And you'll be able to identify other opportunities for getting more value out of your robot by mining that data out of the audit log and taking that back to improve it. It's like performance management of your, of your permanent staff or temp staff, if you brought humans on board. Next slide, please. And the last thing I want to touch on with you is service quality. And, and, and it's very easy to overlook the, the, the impact of poor service quality. If you talk to any professional process improvement individuals, they'll tell you that most work that goes on your organization is waste. Generally about 70% of the work is non-value add or fixing errors that were made in a previous step, either in this process or a previous process. So there's a huge potential for eliminating failure demand and waste that's just built in non-value activities that, that are, that are just grow in, in your processes. We, we tend to refer to it as hoarders, you know. So if anything goes wrong, people's first reaction is add another check. Well, we'll check this, we'll check that, we'll add the third. And all these checks build up over time. They really increase the cost of, of delivering a service for your, for your citizens. So the first thing that you, you, you probably be aware with robots, they never make typing mistakes, which is clinically impossible for humans to do. We've got a really interesting study from a behavioral psychiatrist that explains why. But as, as humans, we just get bored, you know, we can't just sit and type data in or cut and paste data between systems or take data that's sent in an email and bang it into an IT system. We make mistakes. Robots don't make mistakes because they're just cutting and pasting. The, the second is service continuity. So when robots won't get COVID-19, robots won't resign. Robots won't get insubordinate and walk off, walk off-site. You know, you're just not going to have these types of, types of issues that you have with staff. And, and they're not limited to working seven or eight hours a day. And there's, and there's no shrinkage. They don't spend time on Facebook or chatting or what have you. So they just beaver away. They don't do the high value, you know, the highest value work generally. They generally take off the repetitive and Monday work off of your, of your staff to free them to do more customer-facing work and to come up with better ways of, of delivering service. So we really see it as not a way of staff replacement technology, as, as quite often gets presented in the, in the press, but more as a staff augmentation and that you can, you can have a digital workforce that does the repetitive stuff that robots are really good for. And a human workforce that does the creative and innovative stuff that, that we as humans are, are really good at. Next slide, please, Ian. And the final point on this slide I want to talk about is, is compliance and evidence reporting. And, and we found this is seldom considered in, in, in business benefits when we, when we come along and see what customers have, have put together. It's a little bit, you know, it's a little bit subtle i- if you will. So if you, if you think about your existing IT systems, you know, whether you use Liquid Logic or Civica, spreadsheets, Metaspray, any of these systems, they're all good systems. They've all got some form of logging and editing built into them. And you could, if you had all the time in the world, go through and piece together a transaction across these different systems. But it's very difficult to do. For one transaction, probably possible if you've got a very serious court case or if you've got, and you need some evidence for, for, for the legal proceedings. But if you had hundreds or thousands or hundreds of thousands of transactions, really difficult to do unless you invest in some automation to, to, to piece together audit log. By comparison, on the top block, if you think about a robot, a robot is signing in and using these different systems. It will leave an audit trail in those systems, the same as your staff would, but it keeps its own audit trail. And its audit trail is stitched up from end to end. So it says, I went into Liquid Logic and I did this. I went into the website. I did that. I went into Civic and I did the third thing. So you've got that record of the things that happened with clear date and timestamp. So you can see what, what happened, when it happened. And the other thing is that a robot will never get bored or, or, or innovative and skip a, a step in your, in your workflow or create a new step or create a workaround. It'll do the same thing every time. So if you, if you do end up needing to give a regulator some evidence that you're complying with, you're doing what you say you did. Or if you do end up in a legal proceeding and you need to provide evidence that you have applied the policies and procedures that you say that, that you, that you, you apply, you can pull that evidence out. You can be assured that the evidence will be the same for every single transaction. So Ian, I'll hand back to you. I think I've made my key points there. The, sorry, the only last thing I was going to say is this is a series of three webinars that we're running. The first, Lee, brilliant job. Thank you. Did told a really, I think compelling story about how to set up your own center of excellence. The next one is Linda from the decorum is going to talk about centralizing your governance and your budgeting for your robotic process. I think it's something that Lee alluded to in this one. And the third is Oxford City Council is going to talk about how they're doing something slightly different, which is refreshing their IT architecture using robotics. Thanks very much.
Thanks, Keith. Thanks for that. Again, very enlightening, very informative. I hope people manage to get something out of that. We have, we're running a couple of minutes late, but we have time for just a few questions. So what I'm going to do is open up to the panel. And the panel comprises of Lee from Artie Durham, Keith from T Impact, Stephen from UI Path. And the first question I think is for you, Lee, that's come through. How long before your team was able to build their own bots?
In, in real terms, actually, to, to be honest with you, if we look at the thing, probably after about four to six weeks, we're building their own. After work with T Impact. And after the, after probably two months, they were, they were writing them fully themselves, to be honest with you. So probably about, probably about four to six weeks to do it initially and then probably two months fully. To get two, two to three months to be fully working on it. And to be fair, it's not my team, actually. It's, it's a team within the, within the, within another system, within a system section in financial support. So probably a couple of months at most.
Okay. All right. Okay. In the whole scheme of things, you know, compared to the old ERP finance system implementations, it's.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, I mean, we, we reckoned and to most people, I have to say, probably writing the actual, writing the actual routines isn't the, the consequence room part. It was always testing that there was is. So we say, we probably say probably eight weeks to do one. But to be honest with you, a lot of that tends to be testing or I hate to say it still was the thing to spite that would do a deep dive and sort of, and that analysis of it. It's amazing the steps people spit, miss out that don't, that you don't see till you start running through it. So but probably, probably a lot quicker now, but probably about six, it depends on the process and how to test it. But, but a lot less than, sometimes a lot less than normal development, sometimes not. But on occasions we couldn't do normal development with it because we wouldn't have access to the system to be able to do it.
Okay. Great. Thanks, Lee. Thanks, Lee. Time for a couple more. And I'm going to throw this one to you, Keith. One of the questions is where do we start? That's a wide question, but where do we start? I'm assuming where do we start on the RPA project journey, whatever. So do they call you, do they call us, do they go internally? How does someone embark on RPA, getting RPA into their organization?
So we would recommend, we, we've set up a, a little work package that actually helps people to kick off their journey. And we call it the organizational assessment. What we do is we, we will come in and work with a cross-functional team that represents whatever areas you think might be interested in robotics with it, within your organization. We'll run a one-day workshop and out of that workshop, we'll gather the information to actually prepare a business case with, with expected benefits and cost and a roadmap of which projects you should start with. And we've got, we supply all the, all the materials for it. We've got the, the workings for, for, you know, many years doing this to figure out which are the, are the best projects to deliver from a, from a, a benefit point of view to get to really convince your decision-makers. This is a, or your stakeholders, this is a capability to use. But also from a change management point of view, and that it's the right size project and it's going to have the right impact on, on, on your organization. And it's got a good chance of, of being a success that you can use for a roadshow. So we'd really start off with that organizational assessment because we feel that building buy-in for new technology is really hard. And if you get the, the information upfront, the factors that allow you to kickstart your program, then you're really laying a good foundation for, for your change management and your governance throughout.
Okay. Thank you. Another question is, I don't know how to joke. Do you have stats on what volumes per transaction type you automated? And I think that again, I don't know if that's specifically for you, Lee.
Yeah, we have, we have stats on it. Everything we do, we do, the, the department actually makes sure to, to, to link it probably at the number of hours that they think would be spent by a person to do it. So each one has a, each one has a number of hours we think we do it. And that's how we're assessed whether we'll go forward with a, an RPA part. So probably the initial ones we did weren't particularly, not particularly hours, but certainly if you've seen the UC ones, the universal credit ones, they're about, they're saving about 2,200 hours a week on that. That's why we had the additional robots. So they do vary. The, the first four weren't particularly huge. That's why I probably said a leap of faith. But the other ones, yeah, we keep the number of hours and we'll keep a nominal financial cost about where it is, about what's saving on that. But the, the big ones for ourselves in that list are the universal credit ones, which as I say, that's why we ended up with another robot. They, they save about over 2,000 hours a week and there's some other big ones in there as well. But yeah, we have stats for all them individually.
Well, thanks, Lee. Thanks, Lee. And the last question, because we're running over now, but I'm throwing this one to Stephen at UI Path. How do we select what processes are we should automate and in what order?
So we have a number of options. One is we, we have a toolset that helps identify which processes are used where and which ones are, are good. The other is that we can do a workshop. And what we do is we sit with a number of key stakeholders in the business and we'll go through those processes to identify A, which ones are, are easy. So we can get the, the user cases in there. And then secondly, which add the most value to the business or department to free up the time as well. And then we'll look to, to automate those processes along with a partner such as T Impact.
Okay. Thank you. There are loads more questions, but unfortunately I'm conscious of the time and we've sort of run out now. So thank you, everybody for attending. I hope you found it useful. What's next? Well, on screen you'll see some contact information. There's Keith there and myself there. You also got invitations with some details on, if you have any further questions or you want to progress a discussion, please reach out to us. We would love to sort of engage with you further. We would love to sort of engage with you further, help you, advise you, whatever you need. But if you've enjoyed today, thank you very much. We may see you next week when we have the quorum talking, but in the meantime, everyone stay safe and thanks for joining.